Good evening, everybody. My name is Art Whitman. I'm chairman of this Shasberry Select Board, calling this meeting to order on Thursday, September 2nd, 2021. First order of business, is there any conflict of interest to anybody on the board?
No.
We do not have any minutes from the last meeting yet, so we'll approve them later time. I have some warrants. The first one is, we approved it and then Tony signed it, so we just have to sign it. This is the $255,000 check, Craig.
For the Shasberry Hollow project.
It was completed, and so we got him the money as quick as it was completed. Next, I have a payroll warrant.
Bottom left.
Yeah, I was wondering what number it was. Do you remember them, or just do the payrolls?
Oh, it is on the top there. Yes.
Okay, well, the total is $20,915.59. It's just the... Okay, and I have a check warrant number six for $53,347.94.
Four.
This is payroll.
Oh, somewhere.
Pardon?
It's the warrant, it's four, the fourth.
Moved by Tony, second, second by Joe. Items usually over $1,000. We don't see Delory's There you go, yes. Payroll warrant number four.
Hold on a second, Joe moved it.
Joe moved it, second by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. anymore.
No, Delory's is no warrant.
That's right. So, $3,588. What is it?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, 5-0-0.
That was a profit fair.
Yeah, but now who's it? What is it?
A-K, who's it?
Advance.
Advance, something Advance.
Advantage.
Yep. Then the county regional commission for $6,064.
That's the SWIP payment for the year.
Bendick County shares, $2,400. Business card services, $2,400.
Most of that is envelopes for the tax bills, like $1,800 for stamps and those.
Alliance, that's what it is. Alliance, who's it? Bow Fuel, $1,300. Henry Martinka, $1,100, must be for repair on...
Well, actually, the engine blew up on the bale chopper.
Oh, great, great.
Yeah, and unfortunately, it was just out of warranty.
Of course.
Yeah, just missed it.
Innovative Service Solutions, that's Chloride.
Chloride, yeah.
$4,200, another $4,200. All three on the $4,200, and then $3,700. So, that's quite a bit of money for Chloride, okay? And that's Chloride, or that's not the new product?
It's all Chloride. We're not taking any of the new stuff, told. We watch the roads we're experimenting with.
Okay. And Sycamore Landscaping, $2,000. William A. Daley, $3,300. Another one for Daley, $1,700. And that's it. Any further discussion?
David, why would you rebuild that chopper?
Oh, we have to buy a new one.
You bought a good one?
Yeah.
Why didn't you buy a hypers heater?
Because we have all the other parts. We just needed the motor.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, we just got a new motor from Martinka and put it on. It was, well, yeah, it was very disappointing, actually, that the thing blew by after the warranty.
Alliance, or Alliance.
Delory's old place?
Yes, okay. A huge conglomerate, bought every single independent international dealer in North Carolina State.
So, what do you do, just retire?
They didn't have anybody else in the family that wanted to take him over.
Wow.
Announcements, I've got a couple. We are in need of a cemetery commissioner. We have changed the description of the job so that it is just to deal with the funerals, lot locations and things like that. The actual physical taking care of the cemetery, being out there is, will be done by some...
For now, we're going to expand to get through the rest of the remainder of this season. Our current contractor, who does the maintenance routinely, whose bill we just paid, Jay Fuhrer, to do some projects that need to be done this year, and then we'll address the rest of it either as rolling it into, because the cemetery maintenance contract is also expiring in December, so we'll either expand that contract or look for another method. It's not something that we can roll into the DPO or anything.
No.
We're done rolling into that.
So, if anybody's interested, again, this is more of a clerical job, is that the best way to describe it?
Well, there'll be some field work. There'll actually be a lot of field work, because he'll be selling the plots prior to going out, viewing all the cemeteries, and be working with the funeral homes and the families, and the town clerk on sales and transfers and stuff like that. But the, what had always been part of the job was actually going out and straightening the tombstones and doing crushing and all kinds of things like that. None of that will be part of this job. It will just simply be the paperwork and dealing with the families and the funeral homes.
So, is this a part-time?
Oh, yeah, part-time job. Very, very part-time job. Because what was considered a part of the job was the physical labor part, and we're just going to move that out. I think it's difficult to find somebody who wants to do both. It's a good, frankly, a good retirement job. It's not steady. We pay steadily. What we always do is pay it like as a salary through the year, just so you have money coming in year-round. It also makes it easier to move the physical part to our regular cemetery maintenance crew, because we pay them year-round, too, but they just bulk up during the summer and move on. During the winter, very little activity is done in that department.
Okay. And the other thing is that we are putting out a notice that we are looking for a lister. We have a vacancy in the listers. We should have three. Right now, we only have two, and we have, it's been, we've been told that we can appoint somebody to fill the third position. We will be interviewing possibly next meeting if we get enough, if anybody applies to it.
Yeah, probably interviewing is separate than the meeting and appointing at the next meeting.
Okay, interviewing and then appointing at the meeting.
Yeah.
So, and again, the lister's job is different to when it was years ago. You were not responsible for assessing somebody's value of their property. Mainly, it's a data entry thing, because Nemrick has professionals that does that. The actual assessing is done by Nemrick.
The actual monetary, what is needed, is done by Nemrick, but there still are many technical aspects to the job. The lister's job has many facets to it, but one major qualification, there will be computer knowledge, because you'd have to be able to work these systems to work well.
Okay. Anybody else have any, I guess we're still looking for people to serve on the DRB and the planning commission. Craig, please? Anybody on Zoom for public comments?
Nope.
Treasures report, you want to just throw that up?
Yeah, I'll just put up, treasurer is not here this evening, so let me bring up what she sent me. Let me see, I don't have to share my screen right here, as I'm the only one on Zoom, but I'll have to share it on Zoom. Come on. I don't have to take that back. I do have to share my screen. Now, I can just roll through this. The auditors were just here. There's been a number of things going on. I can just scroll through this. I knew I can't talk to the treasurer, but this is what she gave me for this meeting. This is at the end of July, cash balance at the end of July. It's reflecting, you know, we're getting some tax receipts in, $183,000 in tax receipts already. What's going out down here is the checks that were written, and clearly, the big one for that was to include the Shasberry Hollow project, a couple payrolls, and the cash balances of August 31st is $267,419.
Shouldn't have to borrow any money, then.
Probably not. I don't want to speak, probably not. And these numbers down here, at this point, really don't equate correctly. I mean, I'm not sure what this 1.9 million is here at 8/31/21. So, we'll go on to the next one. Somewhere it's here. Sorry about that, folks. I've been getting used to this. So, these are the reserve funds, which we just all tweaked also when the outside auditors were here. And parts of these, I can't really explain. The big thing is, you see, like an air pack loan, we were able to zero that out, and this is all just more an accounting procedure than actual zeros and places. The fire reimbursement, Fireman's Memorial, the greater, which always used to have like 80 cents in it, because we did away with the greater fund several years ago. The garage that had that, whatever it was, the $200 we were over in building the garage, that's been zeroed out. And again, this was all with the outside auditors we hear, and these are the newest numbers that are coming up. And this doesn't include, none of these include this fiscal year's contributions to these funds. That's always done towards December after we collect all the taxes. So, big ones where you see like the $158,000 negative in the Class 3 road fund, about $56,000 of that is coming in the remainder of the structures grant from the state, and we had already planned to use all the Class 3 fund for this year to pay off the balance of that. So, some of these look a little dramatic right now, but they're actually quite planned, they're actually planned.
My understanding, I think everybody should realize that we are audited, we choose to be audited every year, and I think this year, they did it in a day less than what they normally do.
Well, I offered the building starting at 7:00 a.m., and...
Because of the heat.
Well, they worked right through. We were here from 7:00 to 6:00. And so, it was two days, and it's just get done. They're all from up in Montreal and Burlington, so we would just soon get back. I'm like, yeah, let's just open the building and start. I'm up at 4:00, come in here, let's get it done.
But the point is, is that every year it goes very smoothly.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's good. The treasurer and I are both very interested in having outside audits. I think it's the best protection for everybody's and most way to make our expenses transparent. And we've been with Sullivan Powers for probably seven years now, and they sent three accounts this year. It was our bonus year. We got three accounts to go over the books, and, you know, it just works out fine. This year's audit will be part of the town report again. You know, I think it's a very important thing to have. We have great town auditors, but bringing in an outside group is very beneficial to everyone, and it's a fraction in the tax bill we pay for it.
Okay. Comments or questions? The, there is a proposal for a solar project up in Leeds Cemetery. The planning commission gave their stamp of approval. The, I guess they would like the select board to just say that they have our approval. I think what we can do is just say that we concur with the planning commission, that it's part of the town plan.
Yeah, the motion, the motion could be that the Shasberry Select Board supports the conclusions of the Shasberry Planning Commission in reviewing the Wade Cemetery solar project.
So moved. There. You didn't have to repeat it, did you?
No. Fortunately, it's recorded.
Okay.
Hold on a second.
Okay. Tony, second by Mike. Any discussion?
I thought, I thought we agreed on something with Solar for the Town a while back. When Tim was the chairman, we agreed on something for the town that was pretty much, you can put panels up wherever you want.
Well, essentially, the town has very little say in these things. But like this company, there was another one where it never got built, Sally Gannon, that part of their thing, because it was preferred site plan, the select board has asked to approve a 5.03 document for the 5.01 thing, which we did. This, the company asked, just, it's more backup for their application to the Public Utility Commission.
They have to show that they just do diligence, file it through, that's all.
Yeah, but it isn't really...
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, that's about all of this.
Okay, I just didn't, I was almost thinking that, why should they when it's already been agreed on, you know, a while back?
You know, essentially, in this case, they asked if we, if the select board would review the document that the planning commission sent us, and if we concur, just vote to concur.
Sure, okay.
It's not in the cemetery, is it?
No, 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 no. Actually, the title should probably be changed, but I didn't make the title, so. Yeah, it's on the road. It's on Skolmeier's old farm up there.
The Whitney Farm.
Yeah, that's going back in the front of something.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried, 5-0-0. Does that need to be signed, or just?
Nope. I already spoke with them. I said, well, just take it off the minutes and use it in their presentation.
Okay. Next is the DPW report, and Craig, if you want to come up.
Of course, you guys know me. I'm Craig Weaver, owner of Weaver Excavated. We just did the culvert project in Shasberry Hollow, and, you know, July got quite a bit of rain, like 10 inches in the month, and we got flooded out twice. I say flooded, it overtopped our diversion up the river. And the way this culvert was to be built, was to be built in the river. And the last time we got flooded, it was partially built. And after that, that covered it with gravel, and luckily, it didn't get damaged. So, after that, I decided we're going to build this on dry ground, and crane it in, which I didn't know we could do when I, you know, looked at the job. So, I've got some expenses that I was hoping the town could help. You've got the crane, which is $4,800. And then, the contact crew, their crew put it together. They were there, got flooded out, and they had to go back, I think they're Kentucky. So, they charged me $4,800 to demold and then come back. And then, the Lafayette, that's the guard rail. That's just a price increase for raw materials in a year's time, if we did this job a year ago. And then, we also rented a 6-inch pump, because the last time we were flooded, it just inundated the whole area, and we had to pump that all out. And then, we kept it on site, and in the event that the river rose again, we could pump the river and not flood us again. So, there's an expense of $14,072.85 that I'm asking the town to, as an extra.
If we follow Robert's rules, we really should have a motion. You know, we're going to discuss this, but we really shouldn't discuss it without a motion. So, just because you make a motion, and a motion probably should be in the affirmative and not in the negative. So, if you make a motion to pay it, we can amend it, we can table it, we can, but really, to discuss it, we really need a motion by somebody, that's to start with, okay?
I make a motion to discuss the charges?
Or, I think...
You have to make a motion to approve the charges, and then during the debate, then you can make, you can amend the motion to whatever number you come up at the end.
What Dave's done.
Do you have a total?
I do. And I have, I have the invoices for the...
The $14,000.
$14,000?
Yeah.
So...
I'll second this.
Okay, there's, there's what you need.
Anybody else need a copy, or you got it?
Just make the motion for a total of $14,000.
So, I'll make the motion for $14,072.85.
In my seconds, okay. Now, we can discuss. Has this happened any time before in any of your projects?
Yes, we were in one hollow here, and, same, we got, you know, it flooded right out.
Did the town pay?
They didn't, that. But this is better than that. And I'm a taxpayer.
But you also have to realize we're responsible.
I know, yeah, I know, yes. And the last time we were flooded, I don't know if you guys heard, we had a temporary bridge. And the bridge...
Was washed away?
No, it was going to wash away, and if it did, there would have been no access. So, we pulled the bridge out, so we didn't lose it. And then, the water went down, we rebuilt the buttons, set it back, and, you know.
You did a fantastic job.
I appreciate it. But, you know, it rained so much in July, it was...
Looks like it's going to continue.
Yeah. And you go there now, and the river's like a trickle.
So, you can't build on site? You have to build it off-site and have the crane?
Well, they told us, the town bought the culvert. This was the culvert they want. And they said, they could build it in place, sorry, in the river. In the river, now, it's six feet below the river. Well, it has to be that deep, and then it's infill. So, it's really way below your, you know, the normal river. And they said, three to four days, they could put it together. Well, the guys got there, and they said, oh, this is a seven-day project. So, now, you're seven days at the mercy. So, after, we got flooded the second time, and, you know, if the culvert had been lost, you could not get more raw materials 10 weeks. So, I said, well, can we build this and crane it in? Oh, yeah, you can do that. Well, why didn't you tell me that? I would have just done that. Because now, you can work in the rain, and if you're...
Work on the level?
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, you got, you had to have skid steers and crane, you know. It's way easier to work up on dry ground.
So, it's probably, if you're ever to do any future jobs like that, you should probably factor those expenses in.
I would, I would factor in the crane, exactly. But this is the first one of these. We've done box forwards and made out concrete, and they dig a hole, and they crane them in, and you're done in a day. And the other one, I got flooded on in one hollow, it was similar. But they had a poor footings in that one. This one doesn't have any footings.
Anybody, I can, I can see where most of them are due to extreme weather conditions and that sort of stuff.
Yeah, the contact crew, they had to wait a week. So, they had to leave and go do another job. And then, when they came back, they came back on a Friday night, and they needed four rooms. And it was like, they couldn't get four rooms, so, my wife works at Kuzeck School, and we got them four dormitory rooms. And they accepted that, and so that was good.
How long did you run the pump for, again?
It was a charge of a month.
For 30 days?
Yes.
So, is that 30 days of work, or did you just do 20 days, you know, five-day work weeks, weekends off? I don't know how you...
Yeah, well, when we were putting the culvert together, we worked Saturday and Sunday, because these guys come from out of town, and they were, they just worked. So, we worked Saturday and Sunday to put it together.
Okay, so it was a full 30-day?
Yes, yeah.
I'm just trying to wonder how much use you got out of the pump.
It was kind of like a...
It saved.
Yeah, we did run it twice, because we got rain again a couple times, and it's a 6-inch pump, and it can pump that river down, and we pumped it around us. So, we did use it twice to, you know, kind of save us again.
The guard rail expense really has nothing to do with the water, with flooding.
No, that's just being bid a year ahead. And, see, the culvert, we bought the culvert, the town did, last, what, January?
Yeah, last January, we bought it.
So, that price protected it, because prices, aluminum has gone up, you know, like 150%.
They're making sure of it or something.
Yeah, anything, anything you want to get nowadays, you just can't get.
Is it possible that with the ARPA money we have, that, you know? Because that's infrastructure. The only infrastructure allowed is sewer water.
What is install, crew mob and demob, not?
They drove here, okay, and then they, and they worked that one afternoon, and then we had that massive flood. So, they had to leave and go work somewhere else, and then they had to come back again. So, he has approved, when they came back, they had seven guys. So, they, it's a mobilization and a demobilization.
Okay.
Okay, that's that fee. See, they charged me $24,000 to put the culvert together, and that, that's with one mobilization.
You're getting paid twice.
Well, they had to drive, and they couldn't work, and then go back. You follow me?
Yeah, they, they left the job because they couldn't work. To go to a job where they could work, to come back to a job where they could work.
But they had to travel, you know, he had to pay those, he pays them the same rate to travel, and then they have to have, you know, lodging and food and fuel. And that's exactly what he charged me for. There's no markup on any of this stuff. And I've got all the, I sent them all the data.
Maybe everybody does them.
All everybody here, yeah.
So, and this was your total that they nailed you?
For these four, yes.
So, are you looking to have us offset the cost a little, or?
Well, I would, I would like, I would like...
Is it possible that with the ARCA money we have, that, you know, we could, no?
Because that's infrastructure. The only infrastructure allowed is sewer water.
What, what is, uh, install crew mob and demob, not whatever that?
They drove here-
Okay, so-
Okay, and then they-
So travel expenses?
And they worked that one afternoon, and then we had that massive flood. So they had to leave and go work somewhere else, and then they had to come back again. So he has approved, when they came back, they had seven guys. So they, it's a mobilization and a demobilization.
Okay.
Okay, that's that fee. See, they charged me twenty-four thousand dollars to put the culvert together, and that, that's with one mobilization.
You're getting paid twice.
Well, they had to drive, and they couldn't work, and then go back. You following me?
Yeah, they, they left the job because they couldn't work, to go to a job where they could work-
Right.
To come back to a job where they could work.
But they had to travel, you know, he had to pay those, he pays them the same rate to travel. And then they have to have, you know, lodging and food and fuel. And that's exactly what he charged me for, and there's, there's no markup on any of this stuff. And, and I've got all the, I sent them all the data, so it has to-
Maybe everybody does.
All everybody here, yeah.
So, and this was your total that they nailed you?
For these four, I, yes.
So are you looking to have us offset the cost a little, or?
Well, I would, I would like, I would like all of it, but-
Is everybody okay with that?
Well, that's, that's, that's all, that's why we discuss.
Just where exactly would it come from, since it's not budgeted last year? Would it just come out of the reserve fund?
Uh, yeah, the only place we could take it out of is, is, um, a deficit to reserve fund. Until, uh, we could probably enter into the next fiscal year a few thousand short. Because as we just reviewed, the, the, everything, literally, everything we have is spent on this culvert this year. So the balance-
For road work?
Yeah, yeah, everything in the Class Three Road Fund went to this culvert. Everything, almost from last year's road fund, went to this culvert. Because unfortunately, the, the grants we get from the state, you know, a hundred and seventy-five thousand on a four-hundred-dollar project is not, not great, so.
Well, and too, the weather played a, you know, big role in this expense. This is exactly why.
This is exactly why.
I don't have a problem with it myself.
Okay, Ken?
Well, my, my first question was the, was the culvert, was the crane. I mean, I tend to feel it should have been put in there, as a part of the original bid.
Yeah, in hindsight, that's-
I mean, that's, well, I don't know, they, they told us that they could build it, they'd build it in the river, and it's, it's all aluminum. So it's like, well, I guess maybe you can't structurally pick it up, so I said, well, can we build it up here? And, oh yeah, yeah, there's, that's no problem. I said, well, you should have told us that, because that's the way to do it. Because you just, you've taken too much risk in the river. I, I, I wouldn't do it again like that.
Yeah, well, no, I, I'd build, you know, stuff like that, not with that, but it's-
And they told us, uh, three or four days to build it, and then when they got here, they thought this was like a seven-day project. It's like, well, that's a big difference.
Yeah, it's-
Yeah, I, I, I agree, you know, and, and if I was to build another one, I would definitely have the crane in there. But there wasn't a lot of room either, too.
Well, I, I would have looked at it, Craig, I mean, I, I went over there, so I don't-
So we had to widen, and, and again, it's private property, so, you know, we had to approach on private property.
Kind of restrict it to your-
Yeah, if we're out of our reach. So it's like, we're gonna build this fifty-foot long, twenty-five-foot wide, and still have cars be able to get by us. So we, we were able to do it, and-
And then as far as the pump goes, you either have it or you don't.
Well, you can't do it while-
When you got it, they're gonna charge you.
Yeah.
For every minute you got it.
Yeah.
And-
Yeah, it's just a round thing, yeah.
Yeah. And, I mean, that's day, week, and month, and if you got it, you're paying for it.
That's a six-inch pump, you're moving some water.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they, they will charge you comments.
Yeah.
I think it's just a bad luck situation, you know? I think Dave said there was, the project wasn't working for seven years, there was Hurricane Irene, you know, and then since then, it was just incredibly bad luck that it happened in that week, or whatever, that, yeah, so. Yeah.
For some reason.
I hate to see you get screwed because it was an act of God, you know, whatever, you know, it's not-
Well, I don't want the, the town being a difficult financial situation either, you know, if, if we need to-
Is, is there any disaster money or state money if you get from that, because of that flood?
This is the real disaster, this is that, it only rained over Craig's head up there. And no, unless it's, it's declared a disaster and emergency, and I went through everybody. And they're like, nope, nope, doesn't qualify, it only, it only rained there.
There were, there were other sites on different days that were considered a disaster-
Oh yeah, every time, every time Benton County gets declared a disaster, we don't have any damage. The one time we really could use the money, it wasn't a disaster.
We got four inches of rain that day, because I got a rainy day, you know?
But only we got it. If it was several towns, with several towns having damage, they might have declared something. But if it's one spot, you know, and the rest of town wasn't damaged, it was, well, besides the normal road stuff.
The day we put it, actually put it in and had it partially filled, that's when Manchester got the five inches. Luckily, we did, if we did, it would have taken that river and destroyed it.
That was, I was coming back from work around, uh, three-thirty, quarter to four in the afternoon, coming down Route Seven A, and it was just flooded out, I mean, and were martin kids and all that, all the gravel was out on the road, yeah, that was, that was bad.
There, there's no concrete footings under that?
None. It just sits on gravel.
What, is that, well, what's under it?
Gravel.
Gravel, not rock, not ledge, not rock?
Nothing, it's sitting on gravel.
But there's three-foot of gravel inside of it?
Yes.
Holding it down.
That's why it's a damn day.
Yep.
Right.
And the one that was there, that you took out-
Yeah. I think it was-
Could have been fixed for ten thousand dollars.
I don't know, that was pretty bad. It was-
Little crack, foot of concrete, I didn't want to fix it.
It was, it was rotted, but then it doesn't have the, the volume that a river engineer wants.
Yeah, this all comes down to the A R.
Don't get me going on, don't get me going on engineers.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, any other discussion, Tony, you got any kind of answer? You ready for a vote?
Yeah.
All those in favor of the motion as, as stated, say aye.
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 Aye, opposed? So Kerry, five zero zero.
Okay, it'll be in the next cycle.
Well, thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
It'll be a rubber check.
Sorry, I'll pay my taxes.
Yeah, right. Very good.
There you go.
Take care. Okay, so what's next?
Okay, is there, uh, do you wanna talk about DPW stuff?
Uh-
The mower came two weeks, for two weeks, and then-
The mower's here for two weeks, they, the mower apparently broke down somewhere, so they jumbled the schedule. We have it for two weeks, then it's going back for two weeks, and then we're getting it back for two weeks. So, the same amount will get done, and come the spring, we won't, we will have our own mower. So, we'll be done with this, and even I've had a couple calls already, it's like, I don't know. People are like, oh, you know, if they came back, they'd mow it back, and that's why, it's like, but we're on a time schedule, so. Uh, but when we have our own mower, one that really functions well, we can use all the time, it'll be mowing a lot. And the rest of it, they're, they're, good patching on the Hidden Valley, who was all breaking up by, by the farm there. Uh, they regravelled the top of Harvest Hills, it was supposed to be done this week, I'm not sure they actually finished it.
Oh, the, what the people came in?
Yeah, what the people came in, and, and that road did need some work, so they were gonna regravel that for them. And they're getting around to the grading, getting the roads better, but I mean, we're in September, so it's almost getting everything regraded and re-chloride for winter time. So, uh, there are no other, well, there's one major project left, West Mountain Road, which is a great grant, where we're gonna be putting in some other drains by the Apple Orchard there. Yeah, and Weaver has a contract for that also.
I think there's one more culvert on, uh, Rollin Road.
Rollin, yeah, right, there's one more culvert on Rollin Road, too.
Then they gotta get all the-
Yeah.
Regrade it and all this sort of stuff, okay? Anybody else, any discussion on that? Okay. Coal Hall, exterior ADA?
Uh, we're, uh, getting back around to Coal Hall, I've been looking at a lot of grants, and we have a lot of different funding streams. I've met with a few veterans about, uh, redoing the front veterans' park, repositioning the, the thing, so. That's in discussion, and Vic Harwood is trying to get together, because the Veterans Committee kind of came apart. But we do have a lot of money that's been, we've been setting aside year after year for the Veterans Memorial, so it's, it's kind of time, well, we're gonna redesign the entire exterior of this place, landscape-wise, not the building. And so it's a time to get them involved in it, uh, so if anyone is a veteran out there, can contact Vic Harwood, uh, because they're the keystone of designing this. And I am meeting with, with, uh, the original architect who gave us the rough draft for the, for the ADA plan next week. And we'll probably put out a, a request for qualifications shortly after that. As well, we want, we still have an ADA issue here, where we have to make the second floor more accessible. Um, and, you know, obviously that's quite complicated with, uh, if, do we have to have a lula? Do you have to have a lift to the second floor? Can it be a chair lift to the second floor, which we could then bring in the front? Uh, we had to, the design, the really rough design, put the lula, which is a limited-use, limited-access elevator, out the side here where this staircase is. Uh, we also have to cover the design elements of that, even if we don't put the lula in there, this needs to be replaced.
Yes.
Uh, so there's a whole bunch going on here, I just wanted the board to know that. I am gonna meet with the, uh, with Goldstone, who did the first draft of this, and we'll discuss whether they can continue on, or whether we have to put on an R F Q, uh, because there will be a lot of landscaping involved in this. And again, like I said, the main, the keystone is, uh, getting the veterans together, because obviously, we want this to be something that, when we expand and really green up the outside of that, it comes off to be nice and where they want it. It'll, it'll change the whole, a whole lot around here. Uh, but the big elements are, are the staircase and, and the lula here, if need be. Uh, there's grants for an accessibility grant, there's grants for, for better downtowns, there's grants for everything, there's grants for G I A, uh, grants in aid that we can use to fix the drains of the parking lot, because it's actually one of the priority spots of the municipal rail general permit. Uh, there's the money we put aside for the Veterans Memorial, the parks, Parks and Rec, I've already, uh, discussed with them, parts of their money will be used, because we are gonna turn this into a, a park around here. So we'll use that money for that, and we'll just change the entire outside of the building.
The fact that every few years, we, we keep applying for downtown designation-
Yes.
That, that's all helps us.
Yeah, yeah, we just renewed that actually, and, uh, being this part of a designated downtown does help a great deal in getting funding.
Seeing it use the, the downtown designation for this building?
For this building, yeah. This is very helpful.
I was just, just thinking out loud in my, my mind about a, a water fountain, and a nice courtyard for a memorial.
Well, yeah, I mean, there, there's lots of aspects to it, and that's why I did approach Vic Harwood to, I know he was a member of that committee, to like, if we can get it back together, because, I mean, the architect, uh, and the landscape designer will create plans, but then, okay, is this all right, we can move this over here? Uh, because their input for the, like I said, keystone of the whole place is, is, is really important. Some organized group of veterans to comment on it.
You made the comment to me that, uh, that there isn't room to add Gulf, Gulf War and all that sort of stuff.
Yeah, when I was looking at it with, with, there's, the last panel on it is Persian Gulf, and there's no names on it, uh, which I'm sure there are some Persian Gulf events here. But when we stole, there's no room to add another panel, so what's there needs to be expanded, uh, which means taking the end off and moving it over and putting a new section in, so.
I see.
Yeah, and, and this is, this is why I hesitated on little things around here, because this should be a one-off project, professionally designed, approved, being embedded by groups, interested groups, and then you just put the whole package together and go, summer of twenty-two or summer of twenty-three is construction year, and here we go. But, uh, I don't like piecemeal and things, it takes longer, but, you know, to wait and do it right, but done right, right once with the proper financing, and then, you know, you're done one end to the other.
Replant the Christmas tree.
Yes, that's right.
And, and, and a, yes, and our, our one Christmas tree we have out there, that the top was taken off.
Before art gets electric.
And, and, you know, the other thing too, is, is to look at, we've done it in other places, is to take the power lines down and put them underground.
Absolutely.
Yeah. It's, uh, they, they don't service too many places, and they're like, they're all the fun of the building.
Are we gonna have tree lighting this year, as well?
Uh, that's not a town function, so I don't know. I'm seeing a shaking of a head, so I-
Well, I, my only saying is, it's too early to tell, I mean-
Yeah.
The, the governor may have something to say about it.
Yeah.
It's not looking good.
Yeah, so, yeah, who knows?
But the, I think the Lions Group would have it if the governor approves it, okay? That's the next week.
Yeah.
Uh, have we got any money to get some paint on that stairway up there?
Well, I'm gonna have, uh, one of our guys power wash it. Uh, we weren't gonna paint it, and, you know, with staff, terminal was again this summer, and we just, um, never really got around to painting it.
It's, it's cooking, looking fine.
It does, it's gone down, especially with all these buggies on it, too. So we'll get it power washed, and I don't know if we'll have time, because we're losing one of our guys. You know, our, our part-time guy, you know, Austin, uh, he's school starting again, so we're kind of gonna lose his availability quickly. And, you know, the road crew, we have a new guy on the road crew, so we're kind of-
Would you dip it on R F P?
Well, yeah, we could, I couldn't hire someone to just do it, if I could find somebody who has time.
Okay.
Uh, I, you know, I know it's kind of, you know, hurting. I'm also kind of looking at not being down next year.
Right, that's good, right.
So, uh, but code of pain, I know what you're saying, I'll look into it.
So, so you were talking about an exterior elevator?
Yeah, I, in the original conception, I, we went over a, I don't know-
It was a tower.
You know, you kind of forget with, with the pandemic, maybe it was the year before last. Uh, we had a design, a basic design drawn up, where it would be an extension now to these doors to a little vestibule that would, that lead to the lula, which is a limited-use, limited-access elevator, that would go down and service both the lower level and this floor, so that you'd walk down that ramp, a reconstructed ramp, and you could go right into the clerk's office or take the lula to the second floor. Uh, but it also has to have a staircase out there, because it's the fire exit. Uh, this staircase over here doesn't count, it's this one, and you have to have two. So, I mean, that's the complication of this, is that it's also the fire exit for the building, so. Uh, and then when I was talking to, uh, our designer, our engineer with this, uh, the whole question of what, does these rules change all the time? And even though we can be grandfathered with some things, uh, we may not, we, our square footage up here may require some kind of, of lift system, uh, that this may not be adequate for, and frankly, this thing is really old. So, I mean, it's another thing we have to face anyway, and it's gonna need to be replaced, I mean-
It's not cheap.
Yeah, it's not cheap.
You're just all I can crank on the people up.
Yeah, yeah, well, uh, it bucked a couple of times when we were moving the furniture out of here, so. I mean, uh, it services well, and I get it checked all the time, but it's old, you know? Technology's old, so, you know? But it's all part of it, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, you know, a process. You know, it'll take a couple of years to get done, but, uh, it is, let's, time to get it, get it underway.
Okay. Okay. And, okay? So, um, before review of action items, we should have put in other business. Any other business, anybody know of any?
Yeah, and we still have the ARCA funding, I just wanted to go over.
Oh, okay, yep.
Uh, because we do have our final number, we're gonna receive one million, twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars in ARCA funding. Now, uh, that's a limited-use funding for water, sewer, broadband infrastructure. I think we've pretty much debated that water is where it's gonna go here. But we have many years to spend this, so, uh, I'd just like reminding people that this money is at the town. If anybody has ideas, sewer came up, sewer just doesn't seem very practical. It's very limited, though, uh, for what we have here. Uh, and broadband's getting a lot of money from a lot of sources, so. But we did get the, the final number, so I wanted to let you know that's, uh, one, one million, twenty-five thousand. And the projected cost in the water meter is one million, one hundred thousand.
And what about the impurity of it?
Uh, gotta wait for the infrastructure money for that.
We need it, it's necessary, so we can communicate to our people, and the impurity.
Gotta wait for the infrastructure money for that one. That might not fly over this one.
Okay. Now we can talk about other business.
The other business, the Cemetery Committee is recommending the nomination for Betsy Haberfield as a new committee member, because we had a resignation this week. Uh, it's up to the board whether they wanna approve the recommendation from the, I was at the meeting, so it was, uh, you know, out of support for Betsy to be here, but I don't, it's, if the board would like to speak with her, I don't know if anybody in the board knows her.
No.
No.
If, if, if the board is happy with her, I can't see why we shouldn't.
Okay.
And then do it.
Yep, okay, then the board just, uh, appointed Betsy Haberfield as a new member of the Cemetery Committee. And they vote.
Someone will make that a motion.
Hold on a second.
Kenny and, and Tony, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So Kerry, five zero zero.
Uh, just one other thing, uh, the Power Group has been speaking with me, they wanna present the board with a, uh, solar project for the roof of the town garage. And I said, well, you know, I have to tell you, we've had these before, but if you wanna crunch the numbers and make a presentation to the board, then, you know, I'm not gonna say no.
No, we gotta listen to him.
So, uh, they're working on it, I gave them the power bills and the square footage and- So, uh, they're working on it, I gave them the power bills and the square footage and everything else, so.
Can you roll like the school and stuff into it? Can you?
Well, they just have separate political entities, so we can't get hurt.
That's what I'm saying, is, what is it? What, what can we, what can we put on it?
Uh, oh, just on, on, on the garage itself, they would have customers for it and we would get a reduction in, in our rates.
Okay, so it isn't just for town?
No, no, it would, it would, it would be, uh, we're basically selling power.
Okay.
Yeah.
Back to the grid.
Yeah, and then, you know, we, we get credited on our power bill. But they'll have the full explanation, I, I, you know, I just want to let the board know that they've approached me and I've said, well, yeah, sure. You know, I'll give you the basics so you can make any presentation to the board.
We had somebody come and wanted to do, do our landfill.
Yeah, we had the landfill.
We decided that that was too much of a race.
Yeah, and, and, uh, it doesn't have the right wiring in the neighborhood, it's only phase two or, and they need phase three.
Four E volt.
And it costs a fortune to run it down from Seven A was the closest one. And I mentioned that to her, that other people have come, have had problems with the transmission around here and, you know, they want to go ahead, so I said, no, fine, you know.
But it's a commitment on our part too.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, twenty-five years.
Yes.
Yeah, and then, you know, it always raises questions, but, you know.
Yeah.
How, how long does it take to get a return on your solar investment that they were talking about?
That's why, that's why they're coming in.
They, uh, before we.
I've asked some people, I've had solar done at the house for like thirteen years.
Yes.
That's the, the power people.
I, I was, I received a, a proposal because I'm putting up a garage with a real south facing thing. It was over ten years, you know, I just didn't, at this time, I just didn't think it was.
It's, uh, not a good.
Would you check with the town attorney, um, on those power panels? Because if you put them on the roof, I checked it, I want to put them on my house.
Yeah.
And you've got liability on those, if you let them put them on there and you're rough to eat to be replaced, you're liable to take them off and put them back.
Well, my, my, my concern with any proposal for the garage is we have a seventy-five year warranty and we're putting all kinds of things on the roof. Uh, and this is a huge commitment for this town to spend one point four million on a garage to start punching holes in it. This is how I, you know, but I have to hear the presentation too. Uh, but, and I wouldn't go to the attorney until we're actually committed to do something because.
Well, you're right, but I mean, they just.
I think that's a question you can ask them.
Yeah, yeah, and it's, it's, it's like any contract like this, especially committing to the town, uh, term that long, it's definitely going to the attorney completely, you know.
And two, anytime you, about the solar, you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, but anytime you're doing anything like that, if there's a roof leak, something like that, their crew has to then take that off so your roofer can fix the roof.
Yeah.
It's not like your roofer can just go do it.
Yeah, this is, this is a, you know, it's, 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 from their point of view, it's just a big inviting, south facing roof. And it's, it's big. So, you know, they want to make the presentation, now how it affects the building itself would be my primary concern.
It's an investment.
Yeah.
Well, it's an investment.
To the investment, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, now I'm out of that incident.
You're all the things.
Now I'm out.
Uh, review of action items, then, anybody remember anything that we were going to promise we would do and look into?
No, I will have, uh, a revised cemetery superintendent up towards the middle of next week and, uh.
The, the job description.
The job description and I'll also have posted, uh, probably a link for a list of information so people can get a real idea of what, what we're talking about here. Because it is, it, it is a lot of, of things involved in it. So, uh, you know, my major one being, you need to be computer literate to, to do this.
I don't, I don't want to remember any other action items, okay? What do you say, we adjourn?
So moved.
Say it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carry.